Good evening, everyone. This is the, I'm going to like to open up the Norwich Public Schools Board of Education meeting for the month of March. This is March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time now is five thirty-one P M. If you would indulge me, please, in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. And to the Republic. Which stands one nation under God. Indisputable with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Amber, would you please do the roll call, please?
Yes, we have Robert Aldai Chair.
Doesn't even know you.
Mark Kulos, Carleen Sharmelus.
Got to log in here, Heather.
Heather Fowler, Kevin Seitani, Christine Distaccio.
On camera.
Greg Perry, and I don't believe Josh is here yet, correct, Heather?
I'm going to get on in a minute.
Oh, there he is.
Perry is in the background.
And Gregory Perry. We do have a quorum. Al Daniels is not present.
Thank you, Amber. Ladies and gentlemen, before we begin our meeting, I know we're on a Zoom call, so I ask that everyone, please mute their microphones until you are called upon to speak or are part of the agenda. Going to the agenda of itself, approval of the minutes of the Board of Education meeting, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like a motion from the floor.
Kevin Seitani, I will motion to accept the minutes from February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I second motion.
We have a motion from Kevin Seitani and second by Heather Fowler to accept the minutes. Either, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Josh.
Opposed? So voted. Uh, moving on, report of the superintendent, Dr. Stringfellow.
Thank you. The first item that we have are awards, the Martin Luther King Essay winner, the CAPS Award recipient, both at Uncas and Kelly Middle School, and the families have elected to have those students honored next month. So I'm going to just move right along to my report in full. It is Board Appreciation Month, and we do appreciate you very, very much. Amber went out and got a little token of our appreciation, but we weren't able to like zip it under your Zoom door. So we are going to provide it to you at the April meeting, but I just want to say how very lucky we are in Norwich to have a Board of Education that leads with a student's first intentions and truly make every decision based on those students. It's not like that everywhere, and we are very fortunate to have all of you here working for our children. So thank you on behalf of our families and our students and certainly our teachers and staff. We appreciate you. The Keizme Award winner for a Teacher Recipient Award goes to Brandon Cook, who is a grade-one teacher at Uncas School. Mr. Cook is in his second year at Uncas in a first-grade classroom, and all of his students are thriving. When you enter his room, you will find a six-foot-five-tall gentleman singing, dancing, and praising his fifth-grade students, who all have smiles on their faces. He is an active team member that plans and supports all staff. He helps to collaborate to differentiate learning for his students. He plans engaging lessons that are motivating for all students. He is a dedicated teacher that consistently looks for learning opportunities to grow and improve his own practice for the benefit of his children. He communicates regularly with parents to share student progress. His students and colleagues are indeed fortunate to have him as a part of the Uncas Wolf Pack. Thank you for all you do, Mr. Cook. Our I Make a Difference Support Staff Award recipient goes to Jean Diera Andrews, who is the Administrative Assistant at Wauquonic Elementary School. Jean Diera joined Wauquonic School last year and has been instrumental in connecting with and building strong relationships with both new and returning family members. As both a staff member and a parent in the Norwich Public Schools, she is the go-to for any questions families or staff had about what's going on in the district. She is a great listener and speaks four languages. Everyone who knows or works with her will tell you that it is easy to connect and feel understood by Jean Diera. Furthermore, Jean Diera is a friendly face for all students and is often requested as a lunch-bunch partner by our Wauquonic students. Even if it is just for a few minutes of listening time, the students know they can trust her and they are so excited to see her. Our school would simply not run as efficiently if it were not for her organization and her willingness to listen and empathize with others. Jean Diera is most deserving of this award. Thank you so much for all that you do for our students. And our You Inspire Me Student Award recipient in March is a kindergartner from Stanton Elementary School, Harmony Star Reels Low. And this is submitted by her principal, Susan Lassard. Harmony Star is a hard-working kindergarten student who advocates for herself and others. She is polite and contributes to our learning community. She is very helpful and takes initiative to help others when needed. One example is a day that a student was having a hard time making it down to his classroom. Harmony Star walked to him, held his hand, held her hands out, and he went right to her and they walked to class together, submitted by her teacher. Harmony Star inspires me to come to school every day because she shows compassion and empathy towards everyone in our classroom. Her eagerness to learn and bubbly personality draws everyone to her. The effort and compassion she puts forth is admirable of such a young lady. I am proud to be her teacher and capitalize on her positive school choices. Congratulations to Harmony Star. The next item, yes, it's so wonderful to hear that, especially of a very, very young person. We're blessed to have them all. So my report starts every month with our COVID numbers, and as you can see, thankfully, they are really, really declining and disintegrating. We're happy for that. Our vacancies are also dwindling, thankfully. We still have the need for a V C B A, a middle-school science teacher, a school psychologist, two E S L teachers, a school counselor, two reading specialists, and one math teacher. I want to remind everyone of the community conversation tomorrow evening at Kelly Middle School. As a reminder, we have pizza and refreshments being served. Childcare will be provided. It would be great if you would R S V P, but it's not necessary. We'd like to know that we have enough childcare and enough pizza, but we really want you there whether you R S V P'd or not. Tomorrow's topic is internet safety, social media, screen time, and phones. It is in the Kelly Cafeteria from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Table one, we're going to lead off with just a quick kickoff, and then table one will be detrimental effects of screen time and some screen time alternative ideas. Table two will be internet safety and risks. And table three is the distraction of phones and social media and how it affects bullying in our schools. As a closing, we will talk about how we can support you, what are some alternative activities that students can do in place of screen time, and how families and staff can help create boundaries to help and support students. Our last community conversation for the year will be held at Uncas Cafeteria on May third, and that is about anxiety, depression, and suicide prevention. So we hope to see families and parents there. The next item on my report is welcoming to our two new principals who will start their principal journey in July. They are both here this evening. I would really don't want to jip them out of having their family come and be introduced to you in person next month. And so I'm going to read my synopsis on them because they're here and they're so excited and eager, and they both have suits and ties on. So I'm going to start with Mr. William Hollihan. We call him Bill. As you know, we began a new principal search at Mahan because our beloved Ashley Favello is going to Moriarty the fall. And I think it's with mixed heart. She loves both schools that she is going, but we're thankful for her leadership. We have an interview committee that included Mark Kulos and Christine Distaccio from the Board of Ed, Principals Ashley Favello and Susan Lassard, Mahan Teachers Danielle, Bodette Sandoval, and Karen Frick, Mahan Parent Jackie Bowden, Assistant Superintendent Tamar Gloucester, our Equity Director Sarah Dusso, and our Multi-Language Learner Director Luz Rivera, and myself. The group unanimously selected Bill Hollihan to become the Mahan Elementary School Principal as of July first. Bill currently serves as an Assistant Principal in Norwich. He formally served as a Math Intervention Specialist in Trumbull, a middle-school math teacher in New Haven, and a math teacher leader and department chair in Florida. Bill graduated from the University of Vermont with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Political Science in Latin. He graduated from Springfield College with a Master's of Education degree. He received his graduate study certification in Secondary Education Teacher Preparation from Grand Canyon State University and a Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from the University of West Florida. Bill has experience delivering professional development, leading STEM initiative, managing systems of data, managing bullying and Title IX investigations, leading math curriculum and instructional initiatives. Hold on, I just lost my place. A P L C facilitator and testing coordinator. As a teacher, he himself earned the Golden Apple Award of Distinction in Teaching and the Chamber of Commerce Teacher of the Year Award. Bill and his family make their home in East Haven. Please join me in welcoming Bill to Mahan Elementary School. Bill, you have a choice. You can either make some remarks now or do it in person in April. What would you prefer?
I can make a full remark in April, but I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I'm really excited to take on the challenge of filling Ashley's shoes, and I really just want to make sure that every day I live up to the expectations and keep on moving Mahan in the right direction. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Bill. Congratulations. Veterans Elementary School, we have appointed Mr. Nicholas Nick Federici. He is with us here this evening as well. We began a new principal search, and on our interview committee were Mark Kulos and Christine Distaccio from the Board of Ed, Principals Ashley Favello and Susan Lassard, veteran teachers, Veterans Elementary School teachers, who are also veteran teachers, Dawn Barry and Chris Hargis, Norwich Public Schools parent Jackie Bowden, Assistant Superintendent Gloucester, Equity Director Sarah Dusso, Multi-Language Learner Director Luz Rivera, and myself. And the group unanimously selected Nick Federici to become the Veterans Elementary School Principal as of July first, two thousand and twenty-three. Nick currently serves as an Assistant Principal in Norwich. He formally served as the Dean of Climate and Culture at Teachers Memorial Global Studies Magnet Middle School. He was a grade-four and grade-five teacher in Avon, Connecticut for eight years. Before entering the field of education, he served as a police officer and SWAT leader and SWAT team member in South Carolina before moving back to Connecticut. He also served our country as a section leader in the United States Marines for four years. So thank you so much, Nick, for your service. We're very appreciative of it. Nick has experience as a summer school coordinator, leading data analysis teams, leading safety and professional development committees, serving on math instructional leadership committee, creating projects-based learning curriculum, units for teachers, implementing teacher choice of professional development, and coordinating a Saturday Academy School. Nick graduated from Central Connecticut State University with a Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education and a Master's Degree in Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, fondly known as STEM. He received a six-year diploma in educational leadership from UConn. Nick and his family make their home in Weathersfield. Please join me in welcoming Nick to Veterans Elementary School. And Nick, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, say a few words. I'll thank you. To say I'm excited to be the next principal of Veterans is definitely an understatement. I look forward to the journey ahead, working with all the stakeholders to make sure students at Veterans not only meet success, but meet success at high levels and on a consistent basis. So I'm very excited, and thank you to everyone on the Zoom call who has made me a better educator and leader since I've come to Norwich in April, last April. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Brina Northcott and Brandy are just beaming and looking like proud mamas right now, gentlemen. They're very proud of you. I'm sure they had quite a bit to do with your success. So thank you both, and we would love to meet your families in April and give you a chance for further remarks if you so choose. I think the best part of my report is always Sarah Dusso's Equity Report. In there, she has, if you don't have a chance to read it, you really should. It just far surpasses so much of certainly what I'm doing every day. Sarah, I think, generates ten times as much. She's working on attendance. She's given you that data. She has some information about the work of her equity coaches. If you had the pleasure of celebrating along with them the Black Heritage Night, it was an amazing, amazing event, and that is really attributed to Sarah and her team. She also highlights monthly the district behavior logs and thereby put on there in graphs by subtype, 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 which means majors and minor infractions. Then she also breaks them up by location, where is the behavior happening, by the district average per day, and district behavioral logs by race. And so it gives you quite a bit of information, and we work through that information. Sarah provides us professional development monthly at our district leadership team meetings, where Tamar Gloucester and I, Lisa Hughes, and Luz Rivera also present information. And it's just very steeped in really good data to make our schools stronger. She talks about a family engagement, the McKinney-Vento provisions. We have ninety-one homeless students that we are working with in our schools right now. She brags about our really fabulous recruitment and retention data on educator diversity in the Norwich Public Schools versus the state of Connecticut overall. And we're just really mindful of that work and want to keep it right in front of us. She talks about the work of her school counselors and what they're working on and the data that they contribute to. Also, the social-emotional learning coaches that are doing emotional regulation strategies, behavioral strategies, restorative practice coaching with our teachers. We report now one hundred and eighty-nine unduplicated volunteers to the Norwich Public Schools. We're really, really thankful for them. They are mostly parents, but all community members. They volunteer in the cafeteria, in the playground, for PBIS events, in the classrooms, in the extended learning program, on field trips, in band clinics, in the office, in the cafeteria, in the library, in sports, and extended learning programs at the middle school. And they just really, like, the backbone of our work. We're so proud of Sarah Hill and Sarah Dusso for getting this started. And then Sarah does a highlight and a welcoming of our new volunteers, puts their picture in her report, and some of the most recent wonderful events, donations, and community partnerships. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Stringfellow. Any comments from the board? I'd like to again echo the sentiments and the congratulations to both of our new incoming principals. I wish you nothing but good success and best wishes. And I look forward to, we look forward to, as the entire board, to meeting you next month with your families. With that being said, let's move on to the report of the Assistant Superintendent, Tamar Gloucester, please.
Good evening, everyone. Contained in my report, you will also see a report from the Adult Education Director of updates of each of the programs. That's in adult ed. You will also see the Multilingual Language Director report as well, and the updates that are happening within that division. In my report, I just want to highlight just a couple of things. You will see, first, we have a new program, a new partnership that we started with Sea Perch. It's an innovative underwater robotics program, so they'll be working with both Kelly and as well as with teachers, with our students, on building parts for submarines. So we're really excited about to have them and have that program. And then the second thing, I just want to bring to your attention, is that PDEC we met, and the Educator Evaluation and Support Council has considered improvements and changes for the educator evaluation system in the following areas. So it's with standards and criteria, the goal-setting process, professional practice, and student growth, evaluator, observer, stakeholder feedback, and engagement process elements, and as well as dispute resolution. So there are some shifts that will take place with that, and as we begin to work on that. And that's due for implementation for July two thousand and twenty-four. So we look forward to hearing more information from the State Department of Education about that. And so that includes my report, and then I open up for questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Tamar. Moving on, we'll go to report of the Business Administrator.
Good evening. I hope everyone can hear me. We've had some computer issues, and my laptop was affected. I don't have a toolbar, so I need to enlist Amber's help. So if you can hear me, I'll continue.
I hear you.
That's good, because I couldn't change the volume if I wanted to. Before I get into my report, I do want to take time out to acknowledge the generosity of the Hargis Family Foundation. Recently, the foundation made a grant award of nine hundred and fifty dollars to deposit in the Veterans Elementary School Student Activities Fund to benefit the general welfare of veteran students. One of our instructional specialists, Chris Hargis, that is his family foundation. So on behalf of the board, I wanted to publicly thank the foundation. So this is, they've been making this donation for the past several years. As far as I can tell, it's an annual event. Christine? Yeah, you're actually muted, Christine.
No, I didn't mean to interrupt, but do they actually receive a written thank you also from the board?
That has not been generated yet. We received the donation in between some turnover, so we.
Yeah, but I mean, we normally do that, though, right? But we do do it. All right, that's what my concern was. So that's wonderful, wonderful.
Yeah, so it's very generous on their behalf, and I'm sure the students or veterans will like that. So tonight, I'm going to provide you an update on the school building project. We've had some key events happen. It's not going to be a building project meeting, but I think the board should be aware of some of the key things that have happened. The main focus will be the twenty-three-twenty-four budget and some of the impact items on the twenty-two-twenty-three budget. So with that, Amber, if you could open the presentation and share it, that would be great.
Yeah, just give me one second, Bob.
Okay. Is that filling the whole screen? Because it shows page numbers down on the bottom.
Now, do you want me to scroll, or are you going to talk about each section?
If you can bring it up a little bit, I can talk, because you can't see.
Can you see it? Okay.
The date is wrong on the February seventh. It was the end of February. Whoop, there you go. The end of February, we had a visit from some of our state legislators, Representative Darrell Wilson, State Representative Jeff Curry, and State Senator Douglas McCrory came down. Representative Curry and Senator McCrory are the co-chairs of the Education Committee. They wanted to come down and see our schools because we're being added to the priority list. It was a very positive meeting. They toured Stanton, Kelly, Global, and Bishop with Tamar and myself. They definitely saw the need for schools, and they echoed their support for the project one hundred percent. So that was a very fruitful meeting, and it was arranged by Darrell Wilson, so it was much appreciated. Then on March sixth, there was a kickoff meeting held at City Hall with representatives from Construction Solutions Group, C S G, as you'll come to learn that acronym. I attended with the city manager, Josh Pathier, the city controller, and Bob Kestron over the city purchasing agent. Basically, that was a general review of the project, the timeline, the process, who's going to do what and when. So that meeting was a very, very good meeting as well. The next day, we held a very important meeting with the Board of Ed Chairman, the Superintendent, the Building Committee Chairman, two representatives from D A S, the consultants, and every other city official who's involved with the building project. And the purpose of that meeting was to ensure that the proper documentation was sent in from the Superintendent's Office to ensure that the written language to get the Stanton and Greenville Project onto the priority list would be done. And for those of you that track legislative bills, that's House Bill one-two-zero-one. They actually write in each school that's getting funding, and we're being added on the back end. So that letter needed to come from the Superintendent. So Kristin, Dr. Stringfellow, and the city manager drafted a letter, and that was sent in on time. Then the next day, on March ninth, a kickoff meeting was held in the Superintendent's Office with C S G. It says O S G, but it was C S G, and the purpose of that meeting was to review the requirements for submitting the educational specifications for the Stanton and Greenville projects. The Board of Ed will have to vote on those specifications at the May meeting. We've already begun work with them. Our Facilities Director, Safety and Transportation Director, and I T Director have some work that they received today to do in relation to the educational specifications. So that's the update on the school building project, and I think the activity is going to get fast and furious for a lot of people as we go forward.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but unless something's changed, I think they preferred to try to shoot for the April meeting for the Ed specs, so that's what we're working towards. The May meeting would be as a sort of a second choice.
Well, that would be good. We'll do everything we can to make sure that that happens. So next, I want to talk about some twenty-two-twenty-three impact items. You've heard me talk before about the excess cost grant. They actually did pass the legislation, so we did, we will be receiving the ninety-one percent as opposed to the seventy-six percent. However, we're not going to actually see that money until May. So I've done some calculations on where we think it will be. Again, I won't know until it comes in for certain, but the payment we received in February was one million three hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars. And normally, that would be seventy percent of the total grant payment, but that's not going to hold true. So I'm expecting, based on the new reimbursement, that we'll receive an additional eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, but it's still, best guess at the math. So that would bring our total payment, and bring it, please, up a little, Amber, to two million two hundred and twenty thousand dollars versus a budget of one million three hundred and forty. dollars versus a budget of 1,342. So that's going to help to offset our deficit on the special ed tuitions and high cost students. So the next item I want to talk about before we get into the 2324 budget is food service. Right now, our food service, we're known as a self-op. We've been having a lot of difficulty staffing, both from the kitchen manager level and from the general workforce in general. We've consistently been down 10 to 12 people. We're going to begin exploring going to a food management service company. It's affectionately known as an FMSC. So the state has a very structured RFP process. So we're beginning that work this week. It'll take us a few weeks to get it together, but potential benefits would be a more diverse menu, more resources, access to dieticians, nutritionists, innovative meal programming for students and again, potentially staffing. So we'll go through that process and do an evaluation and make the decision of whether we should remain with our own self-op or move to a food service operation. Do have one more facilities issue that I do want to talk about. It's Stanton. Stanton continues to cause problems and for now we dodged a major bullet with our septic system. Without going into a lot of detail, there's a lift station that collects all of the sewage matter from the school system and then pumps it through a two-inch line out to the city sewer system. That's a 770-foot line from the list station. That's two inches in diameter. And about two weeks ago, this system stopped working. So it was determined working with Public Works that the line was either plugged or had collapsed. So on a daily basis, Norwich Public Works was coming out and pumping out the lift station and there's no way they could continue to do that day after day after day. So we were able to find a contractor that services central office and they came in and jetted the system. It took two plus days because of the length of the line. He had to make modifications in the plumbing in the lift station and he had to go from both ends of the line, 400 feet one direction, then basically 400 feet the other direction. And he seemed to have solved the problem. So for now, it's been working well since Friday. So we think we're out of the woods on that, but that was an expensive repair. That was $15,000. And basically the system is old and undersized and it wasn't intended for 500 people. So we just wanted to make you aware of that. That's another facilities issue and I can't wait till we have new schools.
I was going to say the same thing.
So again, the need is definitely there. There's no, no doubt about that. There's something happens every day. With that, I'm going to jump into the budget. And as you all know, we've had a series of three budget development meetings and they were a few hours long. Each meeting, we looked at the major segments on each of those three nights. Board of members or members of the committee, as are a couple of city council members. So with that said, I'm not going to rehash everything we did all of those nights. I don't think that would be productive. When we finished our last meeting on March 1st, our budget increase was at seven and a half percent. And as I closed that meeting, I said, please be mindful that the budget process is continuous and ongoing and we'll continue to make adjustments as we get more information. So in the last two weeks, working with Josh at the city, we were able and meet with our brokers, we got reductions on our workers' comp and liability insurance. We've tweaked unemployment. We redid the diesel fuel numbers based on the fixed price fuel contract that I entered into. Dr. Stringfellow and Tamara and I went through the general supply budgets for the schools and our equipment needs. And as a result of that work, we've managed to drop the increase down to 6.98%, which is a $438,000 reduction from where we were two weeks ago. So the next slide, please. So in comparison, you can see the 2122 budget was 86.3 million. This current year budget is 86.8 million. That's $457,000 increase. I do want to just remind everyone that we actually had a budget increase of 2.3% last year, but in the spirit of cooperation and to get down to a zero mil increase, we reduced the budget by $1.5 million. We did not, however, not spend that money. We funded it through grants, SRF funding, the 2122 budget surplus. So I mean, we bought our trucks out of there. We bought IT equipment and so on and so forth. So this year's budget is kind of artificially low. So when you look at it from that perspective, had we not done that, the increase wouldn't be the 6.98%. So next. Somehow we kind of bumped the transportation line over, but again, this shows the big categories to some extent, which fix our budget. We basically have 4.7% of our line items are not fixed in nature. And even that's a little deceiving because we have things in that 4.7% like legal expenses. You know, there's only so much you can do with those things. So these are the big budget drivers. And this is the first time I believe that we've ever had tuitions become the largest single component of our budget. It's always been salaries, then followed by fringe benefits. If you add the two together, but in and of itself, tuitions has become the largest number that's being driven this year by a 7.25% of NFA and the higher than expected special ed costs this year, which will carry over into next year. So the next slide, please, Amber. This is just a snapshot of our fringe benefits. What we did since the last time we met, we reduced unemployment compensation by $25,000 and workers' compensation by 214. Collectively, it's a 4% increase, which is pretty good for when you consider all of those fringe, fringe benefits. And the last two slides I have for you, and it's split in two, otherwise you'd never be able to see it, is, and it's in your packet. It's the budget by object, which you're familiar at looking at each board meeting. If you take time to look at this on your own, I just want to point out that there are some differences. We always try to break out the budget and get a little more clarity and transparency and make it easier to identify. You, you'll see two new line items in the salaries. One is called other salaries and one is overtime. We've always had overtime in the district, but it's never been monitored individually. It's always been buried within the department. So we try to minimize that, but $90,000 of that, $94,000 is for custodians and maintainers and it's related to snow removal, emergency repairs, staff shortages and things like that. Other than that, we do the very best we can to minimize overtime. The other line item up there for salaries, those are stipends for all the different positions from athletic coaches and all the academic stipends. They've always been there. They've just been buried within the certified line and we thought it would be prudent for us to try and track those and monitor those and see what we're actually spending on stipends. Next one, please, Amber, and this would be the last one. We do have some categories that you'll see some big shifts in it. I should have not gone ahead yet, but outside subs. We had just under $600,000 budget for that line. I mean, you'll see it's drastically reduced. We won't be using Kelly Services any longer next year. And the dollars that were budgeted there for substitutes is up in the certified sub-line item. So that makes that look a little higher than it normally would be. We also are discontinuing the print shop. So you'll see that line item dropping by quite a bit. We're expecting to save about $150,000. You'll also see the line item like financial services, that's going to drop by $82,000 because that represents one of the payroll people that we're being charged for at the city. So we'll continue to refine the accounts so we can get better reporting and a better understanding. So with, with that, that's the summary. We're at 6.98%. If you wanted to go back and visit any of the details, I don't have all my, I can't access all my slides, my files now because I have no toolbar, but I can go by memory and Amber does have some of my data.
Bob, I see a huge increase in the maintenance supplies for this upcoming budget. Any, any cause for that?
Yes, it's actually not an increase. What we did at the end of last year, that was one of the items where we were able to target purchasing and we bought a ton of supplies from the 2122 budget. We did that with technology supplies, the things that we could knowingly get in to the district and get them in quickly. We did do that. Remember, we, we moved $1.5 million of spending to other things, to other, other funding sources.
Right.
And I will point out that the utility numbers for electricity, water, gas and heat, those come from NPU. And with the exception of natural gas, which they're projecting a slight decline, utilities in general are up 11%. So it makes it hard to reduce the budget when your tuitions for NFA are going up by seven and a half percent and utilities are going up 11%. Insurance is forecast to go up 8%. And you have your contractual salary obligations that have been negotiated through contracts. It doesn't leave a lot of room in other areas.
I agree. Any questions from the board?
Uh, yes, Bob, I have a question. Um, for this year's budget, are we going to break even? We're running a deficit or are we going to have a slight overage?
There's no way we're going to have an overage right now. We're in a deficit situation. We're going to make every attempt to minimize that and hold it just to the special ed tuitions. They're, they're way over budget simply because of the placement. So if we find accounts that are in jeopardy, we'll do every event, every effort we can to move them to grant funding sources.
So you're anticipating it's some, some sort of deficit for this year?
Yes.
And at this point, I know it's early yet to project what type of deficit numbers we're looking at.
Special ed is going to be over a million dollars after things net out. You know, the excess cost grant being 900 to a million dollars higher offsets that, but the reason that's higher than the budget is because the expenses for tuition, transportation and outside services are about 2 million higher than the budget.
So we'd have to dip into our account that we set aside money, right?
Yeah, that would be it. Otherwise we'd have to go back to the board. I'm trying to get a better estimate so I can give that to you at the April board meeting. But we have, there's a lot of moving targets. I'll give you one type of example that, that happens. We had a hearing impaired teacher leave. So those are extremely difficult positions to fill. So consequently, the students who need those services, we're using an outside service that comes in through crack and does that. But the cost is $425 an hour. So our staff member didn't make $425 an hour. So that one event alone has added probably $150,000 to the remainder of this year.
So we're looking at an overage on our, just on our special ed of over a million dollars, do you think?
Yes.
Is there any other questions from the board? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to public comment. Amber, is there anybody for, signed up for public comment?
I did have a person that had emailed me. I don't know if she's on here. I am going to open up the chat.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, one second, please.
Did you want her to type it or just speak?
No, hang on, I just want to
Okay.
She'll be able to speak. The board welcomes public comment as it represents an opportunity for members of the public to express their views to the board on matters within the board's authority. On behalf of the board, I wish to remind those offering comments that consistent with our bylaws, we ask that speakers, please limit their comments to three minutes and there is a maximum of 30 minutes for each subject matter. All speakers must maintain appropriate standards of decorum. No boisterous or inappropriate conduct is permitted. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices or vulgarity. All comments must be directed to the board and not to any individual board member or individual member of the administration. As noted, public comment is your opportunity to convey your views to the board, but it is not a question and answer session. The board and the administration will not be responding to questions or engaging with dialogue during the public comment period. The board and the administration will determine whether, when and how to address the questions that arise during public comment period. So before you begin your comment, please, I would ask that you please state your name in full slowly and clearly and your address for the record. And I'll open it up now for public comment.
You can hear me okay?
Absolutely.
My name is Christie Rose, 11 Crowell Road, Norwich, Connecticut. I come to you as a taxpayer and parent in regards to the discussion and possible actions of policy number 5116 designated high schools. I hope whatever choice you make today has only the interest of the children in Norwich and their futures in mind, not the loss and profits of NFA or any other surrounding schools. As I've heard in previous meetings, you send children all over Connecticut from Norwich if their exceptionality determines a specific program suits their needs best. Why should other children be limited in their selections or denied transportation if the school they pick isn't in town within reason? Attending a school tailored to specific interests can give opportunity and hope of a bright future in ways not always possible somewhere more traditional. NFA might have bits and pieces of many things, but the large campus as well as navigating a huge student body isn't suitable for every learner. My eldest child knew that a trade school would best fit his needs, which he is fortunate enough to attend. My other children have had their hearts set on specific high schools for years. I would be extremely disappointed in my community if they are not given the same opportunities their older brother had when choosing something so important. One of my children is an accomplished dancer with Lewis Cabang Dance Art Center, often spending five plus days a week working towards his goals of attending the Act Magnet School to learn the arts in 2024. To say he lives and breathes dance and all of the arts would be an understatement. He trains hard and shows it through his high scores and TISC title placement. Please allow him to follow his dreams without placing the extra burden of transportation onto us while juggling working parent hours and let him pursue what he desires. We will depend on the shuttle system already set in place to get him there. I pray that whatever decision you make today or in the future still allows my children the same opportunities given in the recent years when picking a high school. Thank you for your time. This is Rose.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for a comment? Is there anyone else for a public comment? Is there anyone else for public comment? I declare public comment closed. Moving on to our next order of business, it's new business. And first up on, on the agenda is for, it's an action item and it's discussion and possible action regarding the 2023, 2024 proposed budget. At this time, I will ask for a motion from the floor. Hello?
Yes, Mark Kullos, I make a motion that we adopt the proposed budget with an increase of 6.98% as presented by the Business Administrator for the 2023, 24 school year.
Mark, the amount is actually in the motion. I don't know if you want to read the amount also.
All right, let's take a look at that one moment. Alright, let's take a look at that. One moment. Okay, the budget to approve the budget amount of ninety-two million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the budget as proposed. Do I, I hear, do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
Uh, that was Carleen.
That was Heather.
Uh, Heather Fowler.
Thank you, Heather. Oh, we have a motion by Mark Kulos to accept. And we have a motion by Heather Fowler to uh, and, and second in it. Discussion. Any discussion on this uh, motion? Hearing none. We'll do a uh, call of, call of the roll. A call of the vote by, by name, please, Amber.
Uh, Mark Kulos.
Yes.
Carleen Sharmalas. Um, Bob Alday.
Yes.
Heather Fowler.
Yes.
Kevin Seitani.
Yes.
Christine D'Stasio.
Yes.
Joshua Perry, uh, I'm sorry, Joshua Chapman. Uh, Greg Perry.
Yes.
Alright, motion passes eight to zero.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. The next item under new business is, I believe, the first read for uh, policies going from four point two all the way down to four point thirteen. These are all first read on policies. That will be uh, brought up uh, next month under unfinished business um, for uh, action items. I'm, we're still in new business. Is there any other new business from any board member that they would like to bring up right now? Hearing none. Yes, ma'am.
Bob, I'm sorry, I just had a question about four point four. When you go, go to click on, on the policy, it doesn't show that policy. It shows the prior one about the um, psychotropic drugs. It doesn't show the correct one. There's just something about the alignment. It's right.
Yeah, the wrong link is in there.
Yeah.
Amber, it's four point four. Amber can update that and then you can refresh board docs and you should be able to see it.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll do that.
Just trying to maneuver too many things.
Anything else on the new business by the board?
Um, I had one more thing on, um, did you say up to four point nine, right?
Four point one three.
Wait a minute, um, if we're looking at the action items, what number is it though? Sorry, I have my agenda on one thing and my um.
We, we have four point two to four point uh, one, three for uh, new uh, business.
Okay, so four point nine, okay. So on four point nine under social media, are we gonna discuss um, the use of TikTok and YouTube at all?
That could be, that could be brought up under uh, under the, when we do the uh, uh, next meeting after you the first read under uh, unfinished business, we'll bring it up on a motion. Uh, if it gets seconded, under discussion, it's absolute, it can be.
Could, I would greatly appreciate that.
Is there anything else? Hearing none, let's move on to unfinished business. Action item five point one, discussion and possible action regarding the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school calendar. And I'll ask for a motion from the floor.
Gregory Perry, I make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four calendar.
Thank you, Gregory.
Christine D'Stasio, I'll second that motion that we accept the calendar.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to accept the calendar. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Amber, we'll do, we'll do a uh, roll call for both, please.
Mark Kulos.
Yes.
Carleen Sharmalas.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Bob Alday.
Yes.
Heather Fowler.
Yes.
Kevin Seitani.
Yes.
Christine D'Stasio.
Yes.
Joshua Chapman.
Yes.
I'm sorry, was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, and Greg Perry.
Yes.
Okay, uh, motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the unfinished business. It's action item five point three, discussion and possible action regarding policy number two, three, zero, zero. Any motion from the floor?
I think you skipped one. You skipped the previous one.
You skipped the designated high schools and then two, one, three, three. So designated high schools is five, one, one, five.
I don't even see it now.
You may have.
Motion five point two.
Five point two is a deletion of policy twenty-one, thirty-three, correct?
Right. Which is regarding the principles.
You may have to refresh your browser.
I believe you need, yeah, refresh.
Five point two is.
I'm seeing it on my end.
Is the height, is the um, uh, I can't think, the high school, um, designated high school policy, uh, five, one, one, six.
Oh, see, that didn't show up on mine.
Yeah, yeah, I had, I had to refresh the page and now it's there. I've had this open.
Oh, that's why, cuz I didn't see it at all and I didn't understand why it wasn't there. So I didn't get to read it again.
Oh. Has everybody?
There it is, okay.
I see it now. I see it now. Does everybody on the board see the uh, action item five point one, two, discussion and possible action regarding the designated high schools? Yes.
Yes.
I'm not.
Try again, Christine, to refresh. I had to do it three times.
Christine, there's not an actual document attached to the item, if you're looking for a document.
I'm not even looking, I'm not even seeing the item. That's what's weird cuz I'm using my iPad for the meeting, but I was using my iPhone for um, you know, the agenda.
Yeah, you've, you've gotta refresh the whole screen, Christine.
That's right, yeah, that's what I'm trying to do now. Now I'm in trouble, can, okay. Um, could, is it possible uh, for someone to actually read that?
Uh, there's no attachment here.
Oh, there's nothing there. Okay.
Nope.
That's great.
I just. You want me to read it?
Could you please, Kristen? Thank you.
Okay.
Absolutely.
It's a one pager and I'll go fast. So it is um, it is uh, policy five, one, one, six, uh, adopted February twenty fifteen, last revised April twenty seventeen. Designation of high schools, transportation and graduation requirements. Um, in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, section ten, three, three, the Norwich Board of Education designates the Norwich Free Academy, Ledgerd High School, Bacon Academy, Ledgerd Vocational Agriculture Program, New London Science and Technology Magnet High School, Marine Science Magnet High School, Broughton, Norwich Regional Technical High School, El Agroso Technical High School, Broughton, Wyndham Technical High School, Three Rivers Middle College, Griswold High School, Waterford, Waterford High School and Act Arts Magnet High School, Wyndham, as the designated, sorry, as the designated high school for Norwich residents. In addition to um, my dog's barking and I lost my way. Hold on a second. In accordance with the terms of this policy, the board will pay the tuition if applicable and provide transportation to eligible Norwich students who attend any designated high school. High school students residing in Norwich are expected to meet graduation requirements set forth by the high school in which they attend. Prior to the beginning of the freshman year, students shall indicate their preference for the high school they wish to attend through their middle school guidance department, subject to the terms of this policy and any limitations on enrollment imposed by the boards of education operating the designated high schools or other legal or contractual requirements of the law. The superintendent shall seek to enroll each student in their preferred high school. If a student is not granted enrollment in his or her preferred high school, the superintendent shall seek to enroll the student at the board's other designated high schools in the order of the student's preference until the student has been enrolled in a designated high school. Exception, in accordance with state law, high school students may enroll in charter and magnet high school programs. When such programs are located within the boundaries of the school district or listed as a designated high school, the board will provide transportation. When such programs are located outside the boundaries of the school district and are not listed as a designated high school, the district will not provide transportation. In accordance with the provisions of the Individuals with Disabilities Act, students eligible for ser- services under IDEA may be placed by a planning and placement team, PPT, at a particular designated high school if the PPT determines that the student's preferred high school does not have the appropriate program suitable to the children's educational needs. The board shall also permit a mid-year transfer for an IDEA eligible student to a different designated high school when recommended by a student's PPT. Such placement or transfer described in this section shall be based on the student's individualized educational program and the recommendations of the student's PPT that such a placement and or transfer is necessary to provide the student with a free and appropriate public education in the least respective environment. High school students requiring attendance at special education out of district placement may be required to meet the graduation requirements for Norwich Free Academy unless otherwise determined by the PPT. Sorry for the dog barking.
That's okay.
Me.
Thank you very much.
May I ask one question, Bob?
No, no, you can ask it under discussion, okay?
Alrighty.
Well, thank you.
Well, I, I, I have a question also through the chair.
Yep, we'll, we'll do it.
That, there really isn't a motion to vote on because there has not been an update to this policy. So I don't know what we're, what, how we can even make a motion to, to vote on this.
I think a motion should be made, uh, well, my, in my opinion, I think, I think this should go back to the policy committee.
Alright, um, could I make a motion then that um, we referred back to the policy committee for uh, an update of the um, of the policy? So that we have a, an actual actionable item before us.
Have a motion on the floor to take uh, to uh, have this policy brought back to the uh, policy committee to have it up, a more identifiable um, schools of choice and an update to the entire policy. Do I have a second?
Kevin Seitani.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I just second the uh, motion made by Mark Kulos.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor and we got a second. Discussion.
Go ahead, Christine.
No, I was gonna second it, Kevin, but I heard you saying it, so I think I was taking care.
Thanks, Christine. Um, yes, uh, I agree uh, with the motion that was made by uh, Mark Kulos and obviously been seconded. Um, I think it would be a good idea, and again, this is just from my perspective, to um, punt this topic to the policy committee, um, so that we can, you know, thoroughly flesh out the designated schools, you know, what should be designated and, and whatnot. Um, because obviously, as we heard uh, during public comment, this is more than just money, right? When we first heard about the um, budget proposal by Bob Zupinski, yeah, it sounded, you know, good, you know, to uh, bring more students uh, in-house in our district uh, to help with uh, NFA's uh, budget, uh, tuition, you know, increase and whatnot. But obviously, we all know as a board that it's more than just, you know, the money, right? We also gotta think about the students' interest, right? And, you know, there's a lot of choices that students can be able to go to. Um, but with our fiscal, fiscal difficulties that we're experiencing currently, um, you know, I just think that it would be best, you know, if the policy committee can take some time to go over it, you know, come up with something, um, you know, solid to pre- to present to the entire board next month, and then we can be able to, you know, make changes if need um, by the entire board. So I think it would be a good idea. Um, but that's just from my perspective.
Christine, you had a question.
Um, I just, I'm in total agreement with what uh, Kevin Seitani's saying. So I don't feel that we had the appropriate discussion regarding this motion. And, but I also have one question um, regarding um, the policy as it stands, that I wasn't clear on at last meeting. I meant to ask Kristen during the interim and I forgot all about it. If, may I ask that now?
Absolute, uh, un- under this?
Yes, it's just a question regarding our policy as it stands.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, it's um, I, I understand, I remember her mentioning at last meeting that we would probably, they, some of, the kids might actually still be able to go to some of their own choices, but they would have to uh, be responsible for the cost of transportation and getting them there themselves. Is that, was I getting that correct, that we will pay the tuition, but the parent is responsible for tuition if it is a school that isn't designated?
So right now, for all the designated high schools that you have that I read, you're responsible for the tuition and the transfer.
And the busting, right.
And if you remove some of them, if you remember, that was legal advice. If you remove the ones that you're required to um, send to by state law anyway.
Right, like Zowich Eck, yeah.
Technical schools and VAWAG, then you will only, you, you pay the tuition of, of, if there is tuition. Um, and sometimes that state paid for, um, and you're responsible for only up to six thousand dollars in transportation for an individual student in a one-year period. If transportation goes beyond that, that would be the burden of the state or the school, but not the parent and not Norwich. And so um, that would differ by student, depending upon when they enrolled in the school. They could be brand new at the beginning of the year, they could sign up in December. And how many days of our calendar are aligned with their calendar and other exceptionalities. Let's say that a child right now wanted to go to New London High School. They don't automatically get a choice of New London High School, but they could, there's nothing to stop a parent right now, today, whether it be designated or undesignedated, to make a proposal before the board and ask for your consideration for a number of things. A parent could ask for you to pay tuition. They could ask for you to pay tuition and transportation, tuition, transportation and lab supplies, the football cleats. They, they have the ability to ask you for anything they believe that their child needs and then you get to decide. You decide as a board whether you're going to, you have the funds in the budget to, to prove that. You know, the parent's compelling argument as to why that's a better high school than any of your designated high schools. So nothing will stop the.
Right.
A citizen's ability to come forward and ask. Um, you're not required to do any of it, but you could do all of it.
Okay, thank you very much. You clarified it a little more for me.
Certainly.
Uh, Bob, I, I believe that there are several bills before the Connecticut Legislature this, this session. regarding tuition payments, transportation, regarding magnet schools, technical schools. So they may be reworking the entire formula for, you know, what we are responsible for. So I don't know if we absolutely need to take action. I know some of the schools we're under contract with, and we need to give them at least a year's notice. Um, but again, that's something, you know, whether we're under a time crunch to actually do something, um, in order to get, you know, discombobulated from certain contracts.
I think there are a lot of, uh, inner working parts that are just not, uh, explainable right now. And there are things that are coming up, as you said, through the legislature that are, that may affect or not, that may affect, um, our, our decision on these schools. That's why I think it's, it's the great, it's the best thing to give it back to the policy committee. That's what we have the policy committee for. Let them do the deep dive, let them get the numbers, uh, from, uh, Bob Zupinski. Let them find out, you know, what, what, you know, uh, NFA as opposed to, uh, Griswold or, uh, Ledger as opposed to Bacon Academy. Let them, let them get, get all the numbers, get, let them draft up the, uh, their proposal. Get the, uh, uh, input from our, uh, our, uh, board's law firm and come back with a, uh, a more comprehensive, uh, uh, and informational type of, uh, of a draft for a policy.
I agree.
Is there any further, other further discussion on this matter? All those in favor of, uh, of having this, uh, motion go over to the, or this, uh, uh, line item, go over to the policy committee? Sign if, uh, I need, that's right, I need to call.
You need the roll call.
Call the vote, please.
Okay, uh, Mark Kulos?
Yes.
Carleen Sharmalas?
Yes.
Bob Aldai?
Yes.
Heather Fowler?
Yes.
Kevin Seitani?
Yes.
Christine Distasio?
Yes.
Joshua Chapman?
Yes.
Greg Perry?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, everybody. All right, moving right along to, uh, 5.3, actually, deletion of policy number 2133, the current policy which is proposed for deletion of, deletion, uh, principles. Kevin, a motion, a need a motion from the floor, please?
Policy number 2133, principles.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Motion on the floor to delete, for the deletion of 2133, uh, and a second, is there any discussion?
I believe.
Hold on.
Go ahead. All right, I, I believe this was, uh, being deleted because there is another policy which covers the, uh, the language that was in this, this policy.
That was, okay, that's what I was wondering.
This was a duplication, um, legal, um, stated that the principals have job descriptions and contracts that are updated through collective bargaining, and you would not have any sort of a lever to remind yourself to update this policy because it's not one of Shipman and Goodwin's model policies. So they recommend deleting it because it is, um, it's duplicative.
Plus, it would be updated, the, uh, contract every time we renegotiate.
The contract is the ruling document.
Right.
So we're not getting rid of all the school principals, and especially the two we just hired?
Please, dear God, no. They are, they are essential superheroes.
I got a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mark Kulos?
Yes.
Carleen Sharmalas?
Yes.
Bob Aldai?
Yes.
Heather Fowler?
Yes.
Kevin Seitani?
Yes.
Christine Distasio?
Yes.
Josh Chapman?
Yes.
Greg Perry?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
The remainder of, I'm, I'm so sorry, Bob, the remainder of the policies are not for deletion, they're redline changes.
Action item number 5.4, discussion of possible action regarding policy 2300, which is treatment of recruiters. A need a motion on the floor, please?
Kevin Seitani, motion to approve the updates to policy number 2300 concerning uniform treatment of recruiters.
Second?
I second that motion.
Okay, got a motion by Kevin, uh, second by Heather. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a, a question about, uh, the notification of parents and the right to object to the disclosed disclosure of student's name and contact info. Um, how and when do we notify parents in practice of that?
I believe it's in the middle school student handbooks. And so, uh, let me just, I'm trying to search for Reyna or Brandy or anyone at a middle school to let me know that, because those, that's where the recruitment efforts come from. Typically, it's high schools, um, but there, there are some recruitment efforts for, um, magnet schools and whatnot for, for, um, middle school. Hold on for a minute and panning to the audience here. I, Reyna or Brandy, are you, can you unmute?
I can for the moment. The kids are quiet for a moment. What would you like me to answer?
Is it in the handbook? An opportunity dropped out of recruitment. So if I don't want my child contacted by, um, uh, one of the schools.
I believe that happens in the registration.
So there would be a waiver in the registration documents?
I, I'm not sure about that, Mark. I would have to, you know, i- if you have the questions that require me to research something that I might not know, um, I kind of need them before tonight so that I can, I can look for them, if that's at all possible. But, um, I, I believe that, that there is an opportunity, um, but I, I would not be able to verify that for you this evening if you, if you want to either delay the vote to find the answer or, um, whatever your pleasure is. That's as much information as I can offer to you at this moment in time.
That wouldn't impact my, uh, vote on the policy. I just, uh, would like to know, and I think, uh, just families would like to know. Just want to make sure that that's happening and that we know how it's happening. The policy makes sense.
Okay, I'll follow up on that.
I bet you'd sit in the handbook though, Kristen, because that's how we handled ours. I'd start with that.
Is there any other questions or, or comments or discussion? Hearing none. Call the vote, please.
Mark Kulos?
Yes.
Carleen Sharmalas?
Yes.
Bob Aldai?
Yes.
Heather Fowler?
Yes.
Kevin Seitani?
Yes.
Christine Distasio?
Yes.
Josh Chapman?
Yes.
Greg Perry?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, uh, action item is 5.5, discussion and possible action regarding policy number 2400. Again, this is a redline version, uh, from our law, uh, from our attorneys, electronic records and information. I need a, uh, motion from the floor, please?
Kevin Seitani, motion to approve the updates to policy number 2400 concerning electric records and information.
Christine Distasio, I'll second that motion.
Motion on the floor in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, uh, I'm sorry, call, call the vote, please?
Uh, roll call vote, Amber?
Uh, Mark Kulos?
Yes.
Christine Distasio?
Yes.
Carleen Sharmalas?
Yes.
Bob Aldai?
Yes.
Heather Fowler?
Yes.
Kevin Seitani?
Yes.
Josh Chapman?
Yes.
Greg Perry?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Amber. Amber. Next action, my item is, uh, number 5.6, discussion and possible action regarding policy 3100 pertains to individuals, individuals with Disabilities Act, uh, fiscal compliance. This is another redline, uh, from our legal firm, uh, Shipman and Goodwin. I need a motion from the floor?
Um, Carleen, we'd like to motion to approve the updates to policy 3100.
Mark Kulos, I'll second that motion.
Motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Call the vote, please, Amber?
Mark Kulos?
Yes.
Carleen Sharmalas?
Yes.
Bob Aldai?
Yes.
Heather Fowler?
Yes.
Kevin Seitani?
Yes.
Christine Distasio?
Yes.
Josh Chapman?
Yes.
Greg Perry?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Amber. Action item number 5.7, discussion and possible action regarding policy 3160, board budget procedures and line item transfers. And this is a draft and a redline from our, uh, law firm. I need a motion on the form, on the floor?
Christine Distasio, motion to approve the updates to policy 3160, budget procedures and line item transfers.
Mark Kulos, I second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, uh, call the roll, call the vote, uh, Amber, please?
Mark Kulos?
Yes.
Carleen Sharmalas?
Yes.
Bob Aldai?
Yes.
Heather Fowler?
Yes.
Kevin Seitani?
Yes.
Christine Distasio?
Yes.
Josh Chapman?
Yes.
Greg Perry?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next item, discussion and possible action regarding a new policy, uh, series 3000. It's, uh, the Model Code of Conduct, governing procurements under federal ward. Phew, man. Uh, this is a, uh, draft policy or model code of conduct drafted up by our, uh, our law firm, Counts, uh, Shipman and Goodwin.
Yeah, Mark Kulos, I, I move that we approve this, uh, updated, update and draft of the new policy.
Christine Distasio, I'll second that motion.
Motion on the floor, and we have a second. Uh, is there any discussion?
I believe this just has to do with, uh, probably new federal regulations regarding, um, disclosure of conflicts of interest regarding federal grants, certain federal grants.
Okay. Any other discussion? Amber, would you call the roll, please?
Um, Mark Kulos?
Yes.
Carleen Sharmalas?
Yes.
Bob Aldai?
Yes.
Heather Fowler?
Yes.
Kevin Seitani?
Yes.
Christine Distasio?
Yes.
Josh Chapman?
Yes.
Greg Perry?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes eight to.
Thank you, Amber. And last action item is, um, act, uh, policy, it's a deletion of a policy, uh, number 3250, and it has to do with copying charges for public records. I need a motion from the floor, please?
Christine Distasio, a motion that we accept policy 3250, copying, copying charges for public records to delete it.
Yeah, Mark Kulos, I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor to accept. And a second, is there any discussion?
Again, I believe this is a policy that's duplicated elsewhere in our policies.
You're right, it is. All right, uh, hearing none. Call the roll, call the vote, please, Amber?
Mark Kulos?
Yes.
Carleen Sharmalas?
Yes.
Bob Aldai?
Yes.
Heather Fowler?
Yes.
Kevin Seitani?
Yes.
Christine Distasio?
Yes.
Josh Chapman?
Yes.
Greg Perry?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you, Amber. Moving on to committed reports, uh, the Budget Expenditure Committee. Uh, let's see here. And we don't have, we, we have no report yet on the ad hoc because we haven't had any meetings. Am I correct? Mark? Okay, thank you, Christine. Negotiation committee.
Uh, negotiations are still continuing with, uh, our administrative assistance in food service workers.
Okay, thank you. Uh, policy committee report.
Kevin Seitani speaking. Um, the policy committee members met yesterday, um, and the, uh, the policy that we, uh, have for our first week that was presented to the entire board today, um, that was discussed about and, uh, presented to everyone tonight.
School building committee.
Uh, school building committee, uh, as you may have heard already, uh, the committee chose a, an owner's rep Construction Solutions Group LLC out of East Hartford. Uh, they've been hired to operate Phase One of the project, which would be, uh, planning and construction of, uh, Greenville Stanton and Uncas Schools. There's someone who's, uh, not muted? Thank you. Um, and then, uh, Phase Two would be, uh, Moriarty, um, teachers either rebuild or renovate and, uh, the Huntington conversion back into the central office. As, uh, discussed earlier through the Business Administrators Report, uh, will, the next month or two will be, uh, very intensive because they'll be reworking the numbers, preparing for the state, uh, reimbursement paperwork. They'll be, uh, conducting the hiring and RFPs and overseeing construction. Hopefully, we'll be able to, um, get shovels into the ground by February and Stage One would probably be digging a new trench at Stanton.
Okay, thank you. Um, Josh, anything under the Otis Library Liaison?
I have nothing to report on today, Bob.
Thank you, sir. Greg, uh, IDCS?
Uh, yes. So a few things. Um, IDCS is adding one day to the end of the school year because in late January, there was a day they had to shut down because of pipe problem that caused there to be no water. Um, so the last day of school is now June 14th. Um, a few events that happened recently. There was a dog scent training trials held at IDCS in February 26th. It was a service learning event in which they raised $1,100 for St. Vincent de Paul collected food to donate to dogs and humans in that event as well. A couple of days after that, on February 28th, the second and third grade did a dinner theater as a part of a service learning project where they. the second and third grade did a dinner theater as a part of a service learning project where they performed The Elephant's Child. It was very well attended, and they raised over $800 for water for South Sudan. And the staff versus student basketball game was on March 2nd. The staff went again, and there were no serious injuries reported, just sore staff members and sore egos of the suits. We have a few upcoming events. Track and field signups are now open, and the season will begin on March 21st. Student-led conferences are this week, Thursday and Friday, so there's a half day for students on both of those days. The IDCS Basket Raffle and Silent Auction is Friday, March 17th. That's this Friday at four o'clock. You don't need to sign up or register, you can just show up. It's open to the public. And One World Day, which is a cultural celebration held by IDCS, is April 6th at 5:00 PM. And that's all I have to report for this month.
Thank you, Greg.
Can I quick question, Greg? What was that Friday, this Friday you said is the basket?
This Friday is the Basket Raffle and Silent Auction. It starts at four o'clock, and I believe it goes till six, might go later than that.
Do you know if they're running it?
Just been corrected.
You know if they're running it that you have to be present to, to win? Because, you know, otherwise you can leave, you know, after you put your.
You can leave. You do not.
Oh, good, very good.
We've never been that way in the past.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. The NFA meeting last month occurred on the same night as our Board of Ed meeting, so I was not able to attend the meeting. However, I was able to attend their college fair. It's, that is an enormous, well-attended event at NFA, and I was surprised at just how many schools, I should say colleges, came to NFA to entice the students to come to their, to their college. And I'm talking tens, not tens of thousands, but there were multiple, multiple colleges, not only from Connecticut, but from Massachusetts, from the state of Vermont, from Rhode Island, and from New Hampshire, as well as Maine, that have, that came down. So it says a lot for the students that are coming out of NFA that these colleges really want, you know, the kids to go there. They entice them with all kinds of swag, but in the bottom, the bottom line is, it's, it was just a great event to, to look at and to watch, and I wish them nothing but good luck going forward. The Learn Liaison, Mr. Daniels had to work tonight. His report is attached to the docs. If you have any questions, please contact us personally. And I believe, are there, are there any other board reports?
I would just like to extend my, my own welcomes to the two new principals, to Nick Federici, welcome, veteran to veterans, Semper Fidelis, and to our Speaker of Latin, Bill Ave Novus Principale Scolarum Manhancis. So that's welcome new principal to Mahan School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, it's nice to have you back in person, even though it's all on Zoom. We were going to make your debut tonight, but I hope, we hope to see you next month in person after your, your little bit of a hiccup in your health. I can certainly tell, say, for, in my opinion, you're, you haven't lost anything as far as your wit and your multilingual language. So, welcome back, buddy.
Thanks.
Do we have, I mean, have we, and we have additional reports also posted to the board docs for your viewing pleasure. And with that being said.
Motion to adjourn.
We have motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Hi. I think roll call also.
No, I don't, I don't think we need a roll call for that.
No, okay.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night. Be careful driving.
Very much, everyone.